We can reflect the attendance when the members show up who have indicated that they may be late. So Prue, if you want to call it a roll, that'd be great.
Okay. Chris Brogan?
Here.
Brian Cafarelli?
Here.
Pam Iaccone? She's, I see her.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I see her. I just don't know what's wrong with the audio.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you're good.
All right, I don't know why it wouldn't let me dial in, sorry.
Oh, there you go.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
Okay, that's all right. John Matola?
I'm here.
And John Winn?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Prue, and let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The third item on the agenda is an informational item. Just about, we've gotten some emails about how public comments and emails were going to be handled. And I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory that the CRC has an email address, which is CRC@, I don't have it up here actually, forgive me. Prue, what's the email address? CRC@fairfieldct.org?
At Fairfieldct.org, yes. CRC@fairfieldct.org.
Perfect, okay. Wanted to make sure I got that right. So please, we've been hearing from a lot of the public and appreciate getting those emails, so thank you. When you do send it to that email address, it automatically is forwarded to everyone on the commission. And in addition to that, it is cataloged and put into a message grid that is part of the backup for the meeting today and will be for every meeting going forward. So if you haven't seen it, please take a look at it. Attorney Mednick and Prue and Jen are doing a great job keeping that updated and it's going to be a very useful tool in making sure that we capture all the emails that are related to charter or not related to charter, but they will be considered as well to make sure that they are forwarded to the right department, if you will. So again, thanks for those. And in addition, we are having these first series of meetings. We had the public input the last meeting. This meeting, we're going to be hearing from the town agencies and heads of boards and commission, either in person or they have submitted emails. The next meeting, we'll be hearing from the attorneys to go over the charter and their suggestions as to how the charter may be revised. The following meeting will be hearing from the elected officials. And after that, we'll take a, you know, a beat and a level set meeting, as Attorney Mednick calls it, and kind of review all the input that we've received, mainly through that message grid that I've referenced. And we'll set the priorities of what we're going to look at over the next duration during the commission meetings. At that point, we will have another public comment, or that's my intention to bring up to the commission, is to ask them to vote on scheduling another public meeting after that so that you can see all the input that we receive, just as we're looking at it, and kind of see where we're looking to go, and then check in with the public to see, you know, if they have any comments on that. So that should be in early December, so look for that. But in the meantime, please, you know, join these meetings as you see fit, either on Fair TV or through WebEx or through the conference call. And please continue to email us. We are reading those and they are being captured for review as they come in and in the future. So, that being said, the next item is item number four, the approval of the minutes. It just that everyone's received the September 22nd and the October 6th minutes. And are there any comments on those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose an amendment to the September 22nd minutes. This is Chris Brogan.
Okay.
I'd like to add a line at the top of the minutes, similar to what's on the October 6th draft, which says a recording of this meeting can be found at, and then the address is put in there. I'm not sure if it's the same as October 6th or not. So I move that the September 22nd meeting's minutes be amended like that.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Winn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries and the minutes are still revised. Any other comments or motions on the minutes? Okay, then I'd like to vote on the minutes together. So can I get a motion to approve, well, can we do it together or do they need to be separate? Let's do it together then. Can I get a motion to approve both the September 22nd and October 6th minutes, please?
Motion by John Matola.
And second-
I can buy Marlene Batista.
By Marlene. And welcome, Marlene.
Thank you. Sorry to be late.
Oh, no. Ms. O'Brien will, if you could reflect Ms. Batista's attendance, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes.
So that motion was properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries and the minutes from September 22nd and October 6th are approved and will be posted as final on the website. And then we are going to move into the next agenda item, which is Agenda Number Five. Meeting with the department heads and other appointed officials pertaining to the effect of the charter on town operations. Just as a reminder, since many people are just listening to the call, if you could state your name before you speak for everyone's benefit, that would be greatly appreciated. And thank you, Attorney Baldwin, for that reminder. I think, Prue, if I'm correct, the first official that we're going to be hearing from is the town clerk, Betsy Brown. Is that so?
Uh, yes.
Is Ms. Brown on the line?
Yes, good evening, I'm here. Betsy Brown, Town Clerk.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me tonight. Uh, there's just a couple of items. I know you're going to be talking to elected officials next month, but November will be a busy month for me as the election gets closer. So if you could just, a couple of suggestions I have. Section 2.6G, resignations and vacancies for the RTM. Section four. Currently, the charter says the town clerk shall cause notice of the meeting to be delivered to each member not less than three days before the time set for the meeting. I would suggest that be changed, that the town clerk shall notify each member of the meeting not less than three days before the time set for the meeting. Currently, we email agendas and minutes. They've been emailed, posted on the town website for years now. And the majority of boards and commissions have stopped mailing out agendas or minutes. And the post office announced on October 1st that they would be slowing down mail. It would be three days. And basically, I wouldn't be able to comply with the charter with this requirement. So I suggest eliminating that from the charter.
Okay.
Under section 4.3D, meetings, it's basically the same thing-
Could you say that section again? I think I interrupted you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's 4.3D, as in dog. Again, it's lengthy about posting the meeting in a newspaper, having a general circulation in the town, and posted as required by the Freedom of Information Act. I would suggest the town clerk shall notify all RTM members of the time and place at which each regular or special RTM meeting is to be held. The notice shall be published at least five days before the meeting. Again, I would just like to post it on the town website. And again, we use email to notify all members and the public.
Okay.
Section 4.5, ordinances. The town clerk shall cause any action of the RTM adopting, amending, or repealing an ordinance to be published in proper summary form within one week after the adjournment of the meeting at which such action was taken in a newspaper having a general circulation in the town. So currently, I do a legal notice. It goes into the Fairfield citizen. I'd like to eliminate that requirement. The town clerk shall cause any action of the RTM adopting, amending, or repealing an ordinance to be published in proper summary form within one week after the adjournment of the meeting at which such action was taken. We're required to put the legal notices now, you know, with the election warnings, and we do it with ordinances as it is on the town website. And the town is moving to having a more robust website. So I would just suggest eliminating it from the newspaper.
Okay.
That's all I have right now.
Okay. That's, um, I understood everything you said. Thank you. Do any of the members of the commission have questions for Betsy?
I have a question.
Um, yeah, it looks like Mr. Matola.
So Betsy, what you're telling us is basically with respect to several of your notice requirements, you want to get away from mailing and pretty much do notifications via our town website? Does that kind of sum everything up?
Correct.
Okay.
And right now, people, you know, it's what all the boards and commissions get right now is through Q-Notify. People also sign up for the, I think we send it out to 500 people, you know, what the RTM agenda and backup is.
Okay. Thanks.
And by the way, every year, it seems the state legislature tries to eliminate the requirement to post notices in the newspaper.
Right. Right. Are there any other questions for Betsy? I can't, I don't have everyone on one screen, so I don't, I don't see any. I think that's all, Betsy. I appreciate you joining us this evening. And if there's nothing else, I will thank you very much.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Anytime. Prue, who would be the next member from the town government that is going to re-trust the commission?
Well, I don't have anyone who has requested to speak. I don't know if people want to chat, want to send me a message in the chat if they'd like to speak. I do see that the first select woman is on the line. I do see other department, uh, commission and committee heads. I don't know who would like to speak.
Yes, so if there are department heads or appointed officials that wish to speak, please send a chat to Prue. If they, what, Prue, can I just ask, what if they've called in?
Well, if they've called in on the WebEx, then they can hear, um, they would have to unmute themselves, I guess. I'm not sure how that works. But there, most people who are on the WebEx have video capabilities, or they can get on the chat.
Okay.
Okay, so I have, okay, let's see, Sarah Roy?
Yes, can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sarah Roy and I am the Chair of the Fairfield Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say I do have a suggestion that doesn't appear that the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee is mentioned in this draft charter at all. We were established in 2014 by the Board of Select People and we've been working hard since then to do pedestrian and cycling infrastructure, safety improvements throughout the town in various forms through activities and some physical improvements to the road. And so I think it would be important to keep this committee going and have them mentioned somehow in the charter if possible. Thank you.
Okay. That will be noted and appreciate that. The charter, as you know, was last revised in 2006. So it would make sense that if you were created in 2014, it's not in there. So here we are, some 15 years later, looking at revisions. So this will be added to the message grid that I referenced. And I'm going to ask the commission members to see if they have any questions for you, if you have a minute to say.
Sure, sure, no problem.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Roy?
I do.
Oh, Mr. Winn.
Sure. Sarah, thank you for your comments and thoughts. I am familiar with the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. I was curious if you had a chance to look at the information in the charter regarding, you know, different boards and commissions, departments, and if you had specific thoughts on topics or issues that are relevant to what might be included in the charter if such adjustments might be made? Or are there other ways to handle it with ordinances or other types of kind of municipal management techniques that would help accomplish what your organization, your entity's objective would be and, you know, trying to have a streamlined charter?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I have to be honest, I haven't taken as close a look at the charter as I need to. I went through it quickly. If there's opportunity for me to make additional comment via email, I'd be happy to do. I want to give you a thorough and thoughtful response. So if there's opportunity to do that at a later date, I would appreciate that.
I expect there will always be that opportunity.
Great.
Me too.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Sarah? Okay, well, thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much for having me.
Prue, who is next from the list we have?
Okay, I have Julie DiMarco.
Hi, good evening, Ms. DiMarco. The senior center, correct? Just give her a minute.
Can you hear me okay?
Uh, yep.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I have one small suggestion for section 10.16 under Human Services Commission and Department. In section A, about halfway down, the Human Services Commission shall have members representing the interests of the aging and the handicapped and may form its own subcommittees with additional persons to assist and advise Human Services Commission in matters which concern the conditions and needs of aging and of handicapped persons. I would like to suggest removing and the handicapped and the handicapped persons. We have a temporary commission that was appointed, that was created by the Board of Selectmen this summer on, it's called the Commission on Disabilities. And it hasn't, we haven't met yet, but that has started and that is specifically to address the needs of people with disabilities. I would suggest replacing and the handicapped or of handicapped persons with representing the interests of the aging and social services or something like that, you know, just because the commission also covers social services and the needs of the community in terms of emergency assistance. And that's it.
Okay. I thank you very much for that comment and suggestion. Do any members of the commission have questions for Julie? Let me just look here. Yes, I think, and I'm just, I was just looking here. And I think that also in that creation, there was a Human Services Director created too. So very much something that we'll be looking at. So with that, Prue, who is the next person that would be on our list?
That would be Becky Bunnell.
Hi, Becky.
Hello, can you all hear me? My name is Becky Bunnell. I am the Chair of the Flood and Erosion Control Board. And I, we, our board actually is meeting next Tuesday and we will be voting on a formal statement and recommendation to give to this group. But first of all, thank you all for serving and thank you for taking on this duty to revise the charter. I wanted to just give you a couple just highlights of what we'll be recommending and give you a chance to ask any questions. Obviously, you'll get the written recommendation coming out of our meeting after Tuesday. But the state of Connecticut has just recently rescoped what flood and erosion boards should be and should be doing. And given how important resilience is to our town, they've made a couple of recommendations that we would like you to consider as part of the charter in recommending what our flood and erosion control board better aligns to what the state is recommending. Some of the things are simple, such as just adding resilience into the name of the flood and erosion control board. They actually have a fairly long name, but we're going to recommend maybe a slightly shortened name, Flood and Erosion or Resilience Board or something like that. They have also made recommendations about the number of people that should be on the board. So we are going to be asking this Charter Commission to probably expand the flood and erosion control board by two, potentially three people to better align with what the state is recommending. And then they have also slightly re-scoped the responsibilities. So again, we will be exploring, we will be reviewing that and probably recommending that we look at a slightly expanded scope of responsibilities in line with what the state has. And I don't have the bill number that was approved. My apologies. It will come to you after our Tuesday meeting with our recommendations. But I just wanted to sort of share the high-level recommendations we'll be making and give you guys a chance to ask any questions that you might have.
Okay, well, thank you very much for those comments, Becky. It's good to see you. Are there any members of the commission that have questions for Becky?
Brian, John Winn. Becky, in general, realizing you don't have the full articulation of the expanded responsibilities, generally, what are they seeking to include in that?
The state statutes are actually, I'll call them fairly aggressive. They allow flood and erosion control boards to actually create taxing districts and to, you know, if we were to decide that we wanted to do a resilience effort in one part of town, we might decide to create a taxing district in that part of town and the flood and erosion control boards would be empowered to do that. Working obviously with the town to do this, but they would be empowered to do that. And I believe the state statutes also expand the potential of flood and erosion control boards to recommend and work with the town on bonding opportunities, again, for resilience efforts. So that's why we really feel we need to discuss this as a board on Tuesday, based upon the state statutes revised. But it is a fairly expanded remit, I will say that. And it's something that we have not traditionally done as a Fairfield flood and erosion control board. But I think the intent of the state was that this is an important issue coming up. Climate change and resilience is an important issue. And Fairfield is probably the, I don't want to say worst town in Connecticut, but we have the most real estate at risk and the most potential for damages to aggressive storms and stuff. So resilience is, I think, very important to the future of our town. And we need to, we are taking it very seriously, as you saw on the ARPA funds. But I believe we need to take it seriously going forward and our board is looking to how we can support the town and support the departments that work on this to do that.
Okay, that's great synopsis. Thank you very much.
Attorney Mednick, did you have?
Yeah, good question. Thank you for your testimony. When you send over your proposal, would you mind just make sure that you send over the statutory reference?
Absolutely.
That you've been talking about. All right, good. Thank you.
Yes, yes, we will. And then we will certainly make ourselves available to meet with this Charter Commission again to discuss our recommendations as it relates to the state statutory references.
Thank you.
And so I, so one of the commission members is, Jay Gross is not here, but he had asked that, and I was remiss in the first couple of people who testified to the commission this evening. He had asked if I would relay or ask two questions of each person. And so the first one, if you would permit me, did you think your department, so I guess the Flood and Erosion Commission, needs to be in the charter or can governance be handled without being in the charter?
Given that the state felt it important to change its statutes and given the importance of resilience to the town going forward, my recommendation would strongly be to keep it in the charter. I know you might be trying to strip things out of the charter, but I-
Oh, no. No, 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 I don't, I don't know that we're stripping or adding or what we're doing. This is all just kind of taking it all in. So if that's the perception, that's wrong, so.
Oh, sorry. I made an assumption.
I honestly don't know. I mean, it's, you know, maybe we'll come back and the charter will be twice as long. But someone's going to kill me for that comment on this commission afterwards. But, okay, I hear you on that. And then has the charter, I guess as a follow-up, has the charter helped or hindered the operation of the flood and erosion?
Current charter has laid out a very clear direction for the board, the flood and erosion control board, and we've been following that to date. So we're really just looking to better align to the revised state statutes and have that be reflected in the charter revisions.
Makes sense. Yep, okay. Well, that's all Jay had and I don't have anything to follow up other than, you know, thank you. I appreciate all the work that you do. I know Becky from other committees and she's, she's very busy in town and does a great service to our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
So Prue, who would be next?
Mr. Henry Yun.
Oh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Great, thank you. My name is Dr. Henry Yun. I chair the Board of Health here in Fairfield. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'll be very brief. Couple things, as far as from the Board of Health's perspective, the charter really covered primarily two areas. 9.20, which refers to the Director of Health and his duties. And that, we don't anticipate a whole lot of changes there. Most of that language refers back to general Connecticut statutes in terms of his responsibilities. The other section refers specifically to the Board of Health, which is 10.9. And we've been very fortunate at the Board of Health to, that the charter has really given us a broad scope in terms of our involvement in conjunction and collaboration with our Director of Health. So we'll be taking it to our committee. Our board is actually having a meeting coming up soon. That will be one of the agenda items to get other board members' input as far as any recommendations for changes in the charter. I don't anticipate too many, but I've asked my wife. I've been wrong before. I will be wrong again. So that's, so we'll see. The only one that I'm seeing at this point is probably bringing back some language to change the ambiguity. There's a little bit of ambiguity in phrases such as licensed health professionals. And as you can imagine, the past 15 years, the, you know, that description can encompass a lot of different, a lot of different roles. So we'll probably come back with something a little bit more specific. And then, again, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Board of Health does have a common email as well. So we are open and welcome any comments or questions as you can- Um, as you can imagine, this pandemic has challenged the Board of Health in ways that it has never been challenged in quite some time. Um, and so it has really, um, fostered a lot of discussion, as you can imagine. I'm sure you all have. Um, and so we're looking into, um, uh, how is it, if there's any recommendations that we can make to this committee in terms of, um, changes in the charter. So hopefully we'll be able to provide you, um, some additional information without being too, um, and I think Attorney Mednick had commented in one of his previous presentations as micromanaging. And as the, uh, medical advisor for the City of Stanford, I'm, I'm quite familiar, uh, uh, Attorney Mednick in terms of what you're referring to. So we will most certainly try to find that, that balance. So thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. And, and appreciate all the work that, that you do as well. I can imagine that, um, what, what you've been through over the past eighteen or so months. Um, does any member of the commission have questions for Dr. Yun? I will, um, if you'll indulge me, I will ask you the, the same questions from Commission Member Gross. Do you think that the department, um, m- must be or should be in the charter? Or can governance be handled without being in the charter?
I can safely say that I believe that it should be in the charter.
Okay. And have, have you found it to help or hinder the operation of your department by being in the charter in the past?
So again, as I had mentioned before, we're very fortunate that it does, um, the charter does, uh, provide, uh, a, a broad scope in terms of, um, our ability to help influence policy when it comes to health, uh, health-related policies. So, um, I, I think we're in a much better place, uh, having that latitude-
Okay.
-than being too tight. So thank you.
Thank you. And let me give the same disclaimer, but that, please do not read into that question that they're, by any means, that they're looking to remove you from the charter. So, thank you again for all your work.
Thank you.
Prue, do we have another member of the?
I don't have any other requests. Um, I think- Actually, um, Ms. Bunnell has a follow-up question.
Uh, if you just hold on one second, is, um, okay. Oh, yeah, sure. Please go ahead.
Um, thank you again for indulging me in a second question. Um, this, uh, relates not to Flood and Erosion Control Board, but, uh, it relates to task forces. And I know you had, um, Sarah Roy had had a, a comment regarding the bike and ped, which I believe is a task force. Is the, is, when I looked at the charter, it looked like mostly it called out boards and commissions and did not reference the various task forces that are, that what I, what I would call the permanent task forces that are around town. Is the intent to look at including what I would call permanent task forces? And I, I, I call that as opposed to a, a temporary building committee kind of task force. Um, but a permanent task force, is the intent to put those into the charter going forward? Or is it just to have the charter reflect boards and commissions?
Well, um, now that you've raised it, it will be something that we will consider. And I think Attorney Mednick has a comment. Probably should have yielded to him first, but. Steve, did you have? Oh, I thought you had something to say. Okay. Yeah, no, now that you've, um, mentioned that, we certainly will, will look at permanent task forces and whether or not they should be included. I think, uh, Mr. Matola has a question.
So, on these task forces, and, and maybe Steve can comment on this. Um, I would imagine that a task force is created by the Board of Selectmen, but there's probably, and I'm going to say this respectfully, I don't mean to be disrespectful, there's probably no intent when created to make a task force permanent. In other words, it's set up for a, a limited time period to achieve certain goals, and then I assume it can be disbanded. Am I incorrect about that, Steve?
Not at all. Um, I'll comment when you're done, um, Commissioner.
That's all, I'm, I'm, I'm done. And maybe if there's a task force that we think should be made permanent, maybe that's when we engage in that discussion about whether it should be made part of the charter. And, and then I think when we're considering that, we need to look at what the intent was of creating the task force to begin with. That's all.
Fair enough.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, v- very often in charters, uh, what you do when you get to the board and commission section is you decide which boards and commissions you want to have fully spelled out in the charter, laid out their membership, their job responsibilities, their purposes, et cetera, their legal obligations, et cetera. You may also have a category of mandatory boards and commissions, commissions that should be formed, that are required, that, that have constitutional importance to the town. Uh, but you, you then flesh them out, um, in an ordinance. Board of Selectmen, RTM, however the ordinances are developed. And in, and you could do the same thing with task forces. Task forces, um, are usually temporary entities, uh, but you may establish a fa- uh, establish a procedure for creating the task force in the charter. But I've, I can't recall ever seeing a task force in a charter. So you have these different categories of, of how to deal with these issues. But usually, a, a task force is mentioned, uh, most broadly and usually not required by charter, but the process is governed by charter.
So I, I had a quick, a follow-up question in, as related to the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission, which is a formal commission. Um, but I noticed in the charter that neither the Solid Waste and Recycling Commission nor the Solid Waste and Recycling Department, um, are in the charter. They are reflected in the town code. So I don't know if there is a difference between what goes in the town code versus what goes in the charter, but I was sort of surprised to see what to me feels like a fairly important commission and department not reflected at all in the charter and only reflected in the town code. So I, I would love to get clarification on what the relationship between the charter and the code is and why a commission such as Solid Waste and Recycling would have only been in the code and not in the charter.
Okay. Um, certainly that'll be noted, Becky. Um, right now, this is, we don't have a question and answer session. We're just taking comment from elected, I mean, your government officials and heads of boards and commissions. So, um, something that I'm sure we can follow up with you on though offline, but, um.
Attorney Baldwin would like to comment.
Okay, yeah, Jim?
Well, after, this is Attorney Baldwin. After what you just said, Brian, I didn't know if now was the time to, to chime in on the topic, but, uh-
Sure, if you'd like to, yes, that's fine. I just-
I, I would just, uh, remind you that the, uh, under the, uh, town charter, dealing with the Board of Selectmen, that they have, um, the ability to create advisory boards, commissions and committees, not just task forces. And, uh, and to Attorney Mednick's point, that's there so that they could be more flexible in creating, maintaining, and even then eliminating those particular boards, commissions, committees, task force for the purpose of being more, uh, adaptable and not having to have it changed by a charter. And then as for the, uh, uh, changing the charter. And then as for the, um, the Solid Waste and Recycling, that is a creation of, uh, by ordinance. And that's just another means by which such things can be created. But again, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the charter. And by virtue of the fact that it is an ordinance and not in the charter, it makes it more flexible in terms of how you can deal with it. So I think that fundamentally, the idea is to have inflexible, uh, rules and statements pertaining to the powers, duties and responsibilities of those most critical boards and commissions and, and town bodies reflected in the charter. Whereas those which are maybe, uh, more fluid or, or subject to change, perhaps they're better left out. So long as, as Attorney Mednick said, the guidelines on how they should operate are established by the charter. I hope that makes sense.
It does.
So would a key element to that be in the charter? Any area that needs to be covered by a state's, required state statute would be one that really would be in the charter rather than handled in the ordinance capacity that you described, Mr. Baldwin?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, John? I didn't quite catch you.
Sure, um, I would imagine that boards and commissions that are required due to state statute would be possibly ones that would be in the charter and ones that are not necessarily required by a specific state statute be ones that could be handled outside the charter with an or- an ordinance of some sort.
Yes, that's correct. Right.
Okay. Um, Prue, do we have any, um, further comment from?
I, I do not have any other comment or request for comments.
Uh, Mr. Chair? We did receive, um, an email that I believe went to Attorney Mednick, possibly not to Prue, but it went to the CRC notification from Emmeline Harrigan from the, uh, Planning and Zoning Department.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if Emmeline is on right now. I can read the, the content of her email that I believe all the members of the Charter Revision Commission have received.
Well, let me just ask, if you don't mind, John. Um, it, I think we've probably received many emails from, you know, heads of boards, commissions and departments. Have, have we not? Have we? Yeah. Should we, should we catalog them now? I mean, I'm, I'm not sure we were going to read them all into the record. Um, that, that, my understanding was, unless the, you know, I've got a sense of the commission, but, um, my understanding was that, um, we were going to put them into the message grid and they were going to be reviewed, um, as a whole. We kind of, after we get the input from the attorneys and then the other, well, the elected officials on the eighth, kind of sit down and look at everything. Um, since those individuals are not here, I'm not sure, reading their emails and then, I mean, we, we can't, they're, they're not here to answer any questions. So I'm not sure, like, the discussion will be had. So maybe, um, if you would permit me to just defer to Steve for a second to see if that's the process and if we're comfortable with that, you know, then we can get some-
Yeah, I always want to recommend that we might want to simply cite that we received some emails, but I've got to tell you, I'm just checking my, my site, my, uh, screen right now, and emails came in late this afternoon that, um, I missed because I, I was prepping for this meeting and didn't look at my emails. Uh, and one of them simply said that somebody's not ready, uh, they'll be providing us with testimony at a later time. Um, but, uh, I plan on plotting all of the emails on the grid. Um, and, uh, uh, but, you know, but, uh, there are only two or three of them, um, that we have at this point, but I expect that they'll continue to come in and they'll be placed on the grid.
Okay, let me just return after that to John, so.
I'm, I'm perfectly fine with whatever you decide, Brian. I think, uh, that's a very reasonable approach.
Okay. I, I, if you're, are you sure?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Um, Pam, I think you had a comment or question?
I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Pam Aikono. Um, just from a process standpoint for us, would it be possible moving forward if we're going to do a second session with department heads or boards and commission? Or if another communication is going to go out, um, to a public officials or whomever that's going to present to us? If they could email us their planned commentary ahead of time, that would be incredibly helpful. Um, it's great to listen to what's going on. It would be even more beneficial if we were reading as it was going along. Uh, you know, I was taking notes, and I know we're going to get all this stuff in summary format afterwards. But, um, if, if our communications can go out with enough time to tell those participants to please send their commentary ahead of time so that we're a little bit more prepared and can understand what they're saying and where they're referencing. Um, you know, that way we can have notes if we have questions. And, you know, I've caught something already on flood and erosion. I'd like to, you know, I know I'd want to go back on. If I had had, you know, some time, I could have been prepared for that. Um, so maybe that's a, uh, something to take into consideration moving forward.
Okay. That sounds good, John?
Thank you, Brian. Um, thank you, John Matoli here. And kind of just, uh, tagging along with that comment by Pam. So, I know we get emails to that CRC web, uh, email address. It, it, is, is Prue maybe every, it's, it looks like Prue every two or three days is cataloging those emails and then, and then emailing them to us again. And if she's able to do that, that, that would be greatly appreciated. Because sometimes it's better to get the emails in a bunch and you take time to read them as opposed to, you know, I, guilty, I don't check my email every single minute of the day. I know they're coming in. So, and I, and I, I know Prue's a very busy person. So if, if she's able to, like, every three or four days, just catalog the emails and send them to all of us. It looks like she had been doing that. I, I just wanted to see if that's something that she can do and if the, the, the commission's okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with, um, asking Prue, uh, you know, I don't want to put her on the spot, but, uh, you know, I-
Me too, yeah.
I do think that it does make some sense to have it cataloged. I mean, again, it is being, um, it is being cataloged into the message grid, um-
Right.
Comment grid, rather. Um, but if, I, you know, and I know that there has been some regularity that Prue does kind of send them out in bunches. We do get them just for the public certification. They are all included in the backup agenda that, um, uh, is sent out before the meetings too. So all the emails that come into the, um, the CRC email are posted on the website. So, um, for everyone to see, uh, in some form or another. So, and I, and I, and again, thank you to Jen and Prue for maintaining and making some changes, uh, including today to the website to make it a little more user-friendly. Um, a little bit of a diatribe here, but I do want to thank the public for, you know, bearing with us as we kind of get our, get our processes all straight. But, you know, the intentions are all there, and we're hearing your comments and, and reacting to them and hopefully accommodating what you've suggested. So thank you. But Prue, did you, um, now that I bought you some time by just babbling there, uh, do you want to respond to that?
Um, yes, I can do that if that's how you want me to do it, the three to four days. It would be, um, that would allow me time, you know, to do it off of my regular workday.
Okay, does anyone else? John, did you, looks like you have something else to say?
No, I, I, I certainly, I'm capable of reading the emails that come in. And if it's, if it's a problem for Prue, I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot either, Prue.
No, no, no.
Why don't, why don't you do it like this? Why don't you, why don't we give it some thought and, um, see, see what, uh, what makes some sense in terms of? I get the intention, John, of making it a little more condensed in a, in a, in a, in a, in some type of, um, frequency, what that timeframe is. Let's see what, what Prue's thoughts are. She's running a WebEx and got a lot on her plate right now, so I, I shouldn't have put her on the spot, but. Any other, um-
Thank you for continuing that.
Yep. Any other comments from the commission? So, y- you know, just to recap where we kind of, we've gone off a little bit, um, but just that, what we're doing is that the emails that have been received in response to the, the invitations that were sent out to the department heads and boards and commissions that were not able to join tonight. Um, some have responded via email, and we've seen those. Some did come in, uh, this afternoon, and I have not had a chance to read all those either. And, um, we do expect that some more will come in after this. So they will all be aggregated, um, and put into the grid and considered when we go over all the, all the information that we've captured from the public comment last week, um, from the, you know, the comments tonight, the comments next, um, on the twenty-eighth, and then on the eighth from the elected officials, in addition to all the emails that have come in, um, you know, on the CRC. So, but these are being captured, they're being cataloged, they will be reviewed in a public, uh, fashion at the Level Set Meeting, and, um, and we can, uh, we can go from there. Prue, did anyone, um, show up in the meantime that wanted- Prue, did anyone um show up in the meantime that wanted to speak from the, from the town?
Just Attorney Baldwin, he would like to make another uh comment.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, very briefly, since I am for all purposes a department head of sorts as town attorney, uh, section uh nine point four of the charter speaks to assistant town attorneys. And I will, I will share with you the fact that the, that is an antiquated concept and I think it needs to be uh removed altogether or certainly addressed by the commission.
Okay. And I think um Pam had another process question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Pam Aikono. Um, the calendar that we set and the dates, did we, and it, forgive me, did we get a revised calendar that says what's happening at each meeting? Like you said, November eighth is elected officials. Did we get that spelled out? Do we have a copy that says what's, what the? Like, I have the old, I have the old original sheet, but I know we redid stuff.
I don't know if we did. Um, that's a good question, Steve?
Yeah, if you don't, I will send it.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have it, but it's possible I missed it.
No, I I did not send it out and I don't think I sent it to Prue. I think we did a summary, but I'll send you a revised version of the document I sent you originally. Um, uh, and Mr. Chairman, did you wanna talk about one other thing you wanted to do with the agenda? Do you, I guess we have to wait till the next meeting to have the the public comment in December?
Oh, yeah, I think I, I did briefly touch on that, but yeah, we can, we can go into that again. Um.
I can put down a potential public comment session at the December ninth meeting, if that's all right.
Okay. Um, yeah, is that okay to discuss with the commission now and take action, or we should just?
Well, this was a, Prue, was this a special meeting or is this a reg- this is, I think, a special meeting?
So this is in addition to, this is adding another meeting?
That's not adding another meeting.
No, this is already on the schedule.
Oh, it is on the schedule, so you can amend the agenda and and discuss the item then, okay.
We don't even need to amend the agenda. We haven't written the agenda.
For tonight, we have an agenda.
Right, for tonight.
For tonight's agenda, yeah.
And we do not, yeah, so, I mean, so anyway, thi- this is what I wanted to discuss with the group is that at our December ninth meeting, which would be um, let me just look here. And so we're meeting again, the twenty-eighth, the eighth, and then the level set meeting is what date, Steve?
The twenty-third.
The twenty-third, November.
Is it meeting the eighth or the ninth? I have it down for November ninth.
It's the eighth. We.
It's the eighth.
Yeah, we went back and forth on that on a lot for a while, and Steve, it's definitely the eighth. Um, it's the twenty-third, and then um, okay, so the level set meeting, which will be basically, as I've said earlier, to discuss all the information that we're receiving in these initial meetings and then to chart a course for the first portion of the um, of the com- of the commission meetings that will take by topic that um we've identified through this process to date, to that date. Um, the concept is, is that after we've drafted that level set or path, um, that we would have the public then come back in and say, you know, to comment on what we've decided to hear and in kind of the order and the priorities that are being set. And that would be on December ninth. So for the first portion of that meeting, we could have public comment, limited to a period of time if the commission desires, and then go into a panel um of the first topic that we are um going to hear that night. Is that, did I get that right, Steve? Is that, would that work procedurally?
Yes.
Okay, and so I'm throwing that out there to the commission just for discussion right now. Are there any comments on that?
I'm I'm perfectly fine with doing that.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Works for me.
This is Chris Fogan. The only question I have, do we have to decide that now? I'm just wondering if we get to the level set meeting, um, and for some reason we need to go over into an additional meeting. Are we kind of binding ourselves now, or should we just decide, I don't know how much in advance we have to make that decision?
Um, yeah, that might be a good point. I mean, I think maybe we can just tentatively not vote on anything tonight, but just conceptually um agree that after we have finished the level set or have a draft of where we're going with the level set, that we would then open up a another public comment meeting. Pam?
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Just, you know, we don't have to vote on it. You you can set the agenda however you wanna set the agenda. And it didn't sound like anyone's opposed to doing that.
Okay.
And just to be, um, the level set meeting is November sixteenth.
Mm-hmm.
So we could even have a discussion on the sixteenth with enough time to give public notice for December ninth if that's what we want to do, you know, to do that public hearing at the, on December ninth.
Okay, that works. Just kind of throwing it out there and putting it on everyone's radar then. Um, any other new business from the commission members? And uh we're gonna have a last call for any other department heads or appointed officials that would like to address the commission.
Uh, Brian, there's no, there's no department heads, John Winnear, I had a question for Attorney Mednick, if if that's possible.
Sure.
Um, Steve, it relates to the 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 grid that you sent out, and I'm just curious, there's a line in between the issues tracking header on the sheet and then the actual grid. And there's three topics annotated left to right across the page, substantial due diligence, research and report, and relevance discussion. I was curious how those three descriptions relate to what we're kind of looking at in the grid or activities we'll be going through or?
Yeah, yes, I I was looking at that as well. Uh, once we start prioritizing after the level set meeting, those are the colors, I I I should put it at the bottom as a key. Uh, we will color the items that we level set as to items that need substantial due diligence. What do you need me to research and report back on? Uh, and uh are there items that we need to have a relevance discussion on? Those are kind of the three categories uh for the level set session. Uh, I could take that off if it's confusing, but that's the intent uh somewhere down the line. It's a code code for that uh, that exercise when we're done.
I will make sure I stock up on the color printer ink.
So I'll, I'll go black and white if you'd like. Um, can I point out another thing? Thank you, uh, Commissioner for raising the question. Um, you will note, as I update this, I'm not gonna send you a red line because it'll be a mess. I am going to highlight the new, you you, in the in the recent version we sent out late this afternoon, the new additions from the documents you got the other day are all highlighted. Um, so, so when you get the document in ten days for the next meeting or so, the items that are highlighted now will no longer be highlighted. Items, department head testimony and other comments that we get from the public will be highlighted so that I have to read the whole document or look at the back at the dates uh of um the people submitting. And uh, I'll point out is that some of the issues, the non-charter issues and procedural issues will be pushed to the back of the document at some point, um, so that as as we really fill up uh the articles in the document. Um, uh, because uh the non-charter issues are, I will be recommending are not issues that are ripe or relevant for a charter revision process. Um, the procedural issues will hopefully be worked out in the next few days or weeks. Um, and and we'll just have to continue to follow uh proper procedures. But the editorial issues are the kinds of things that that we may ultimately throw into different articles or they may just have general application. So um, we'll discuss those when we get to the level set meeting. Uh, but I just want to explain why things are highlighted.
Very good. Thank you for that ex- explanation.
Yeah. Um, any other comments or new business? Mr. Vice Chair, anything for you?
I'm good, thank you, Jim. Mr. Chair?
Okay. Well, with that, um, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion?
Seconded by Ms. Batista. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining. Have a good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks to all for their comments.
Goodbye.